Welcome to the July 14, 2025 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We have an invitation offered by Commissioner Pajali, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Praise God. Lord, thank you for another day of life. And we once again come to you in unity from around this table for your wisdom and guidance as we do the people's work. Please grant us the courage and conviction to hold true to our beliefs in what would be best for the people of Sandusky. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Murray, you vote?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fargo?
Here.
Mr. Wantington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Decker, before you, the minutes of our meeting of June 23, 2025. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
I move that we accept the June 23 minutes as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved and those minutes are approved. I have a proclamation in honor of "Paint the Town Purple" that will be delivered by myself. Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain and the most common form of dementia that affects not only a person's memory, but also their judgment and reasoning abilities. And close to 300,000 Ohio citizens are currently living with Alzheimer's or another dementia, and it affects more than 7 million Americans. Ohio is projected to see 13.6% increase in cases by the end of 2025. And Medicaid cost of caring for individuals living with Alzheimer's is more than $2.5 billion with an anticipated 16% increase in Medicaid expenditures by the year 2025. Another 600,000 Ohioans are unpaid caregivers, and half of those living with the disease have yet to be diagnosed. And caregiving for individuals with Alzheimer's disease often takes an enormous toll on family members. Caregivers themselves often suffer more stress, dementia, depression, and health problems than caregivers of people with other illnesses. Alzheimer's disease is not a normal part of aging. It's a progressive brain disease. Without any way to prevent or slow its progression, and it is fatal. We recognize the significant role the Alzheimer's Association Northwest Ohio Chapter plays in offering diverse educational and supportive programming and services. Caregiver support groups, professional training, respite care, and financial assistance to ease the burden to families and caregivers while educating the community and increasing awareness of Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia by early detection and diagnosis, advocacy, and research. Now therefore, I, Richard Brady, President of the Commission, City of Sandusky, would hereby proclaim August 2025 as "Paint the Town Purple" for the awareness of Alzheimer's in Sandusky. And I urge all residents, merchants, to decorate your homes, places of business, and to wear purple in support of this cause. Everyone is invited to participate in Erie Shore, Sandusky, Ohio Walk to End Alzheimer's on Sunday, September 7 at 1:00 p.m., dated this 14th day of July, 2025. Next item on our agenda is residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda items. Please step to the podium and share your name and address and your agenda item comments. And I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. Just a couple of questions and comments on item number one, which is the $25 million from the amusement admissions tax to Cedar Point Causeway. From what we understand in the community is that Cedar Fair never did sign the MOU, so it appears based on that that the commission does have flexibility to say yea or nay to some of this money that's going back to Cedar Fair for their personal projects. A little bit of history on Cedar Point and their charge for parking in their parking lot. They have gone now, this year, I believe, I was told, to $35 per vehicle to park in the parking lot. A little bit of history on that is they implemented that parking charge several years ago, and it's going up incrementally almost every year. But the purpose of that charge was to create funding for any maintenance issues or expansions or any work that they had to do on the bridge at the Causeway. That total is $35 million if you use the number of 1 million cars crossing the Causeway every year, and that's a conservative figure. Apparently, there's 3.5 million people that visit Cedar Point, so conservatively, we can count a million cars. So my question would be is, why are we even worried about sending $25 million back to Cedar Fair for the creation of what looks like a 10-foot pathway on either side of the Causeway? Need you all to ask yourselves, how many people are really going to use that pathway for bicycling to Cedar Point or walking to Cedar Point or taking a rickshaw to Cedar Point or however other mode of transportation you decide they want to take? Also, probably for the new commissioners, legally and logically, there was not a need or necessity for the former city manager and the city commissioners, city commission, to vote on an approval for the admissions tax increase. Did a little bit of research on this. Many other communities in Ohio charge the admissions tax, and in no instances did I ever see where a community with an admissions tax actually gives money back to the collector, and I emphasize this, collector of the admissions tax. If Cedar Fair is paying the admissions tax out of their own pocket, shame on them, okay? An admissions tax, no matter where you go, if you go to Cleveland Stadium, it'll say right on your ticket, the price of admission includes the cost of the admissions tax. So Cleveland Stadium, Cedar Fair, theaters, they are the collector of the tax. They don't pay the, they send it to the city, obviously, after they collect it. So the question would be is, and a concern would be is, with Cedar Fair or Six Flags closing a number of their parks, what happens, and I hope it doesn't, if Cedar Fair decides to close Sandusky, we're still on the hook for $1.25 million long-term to pay off the Causeway? Think about that for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwanger. Additional comments on agenda items?
West Poole, 1939, East Oak Gate. Little background, when this came up when I was a commissioner, it came to the commission cold without a lot of discussion or any details provided. It was a memorandum of understanding, which by, to my understanding, by definition, is non-binding. And I had hoped that by the time we finalized this, that we would come to some, to a better deal. I didn't care for it to begin with. At the time, it was pointless to say no because didn't have any facts to, because the way it was presented to us, to speak intelligently about it. I would suggest that, I don't have a problem with recognizing that the roadway going to Cedar Point is important and that this tax, spending some money on trying to make it, make sure that it's, that it's taken care of so that we continue to keep people coming to Cedar Point. I would suggest my research has discovered, one, in Ohio, in 2024, a complete reconstruction of a roadway was between $500,000 and $600,000 a mile. It's 1.6 miles from First Street to Cedar Point to the gates. That takes us up to about $960,000 to reconstruct the entire road if we pay for all of it. Round it up to a million dollars if you want. Triple it if you want because you've got some other things you want to do. Bridge construction is about $600,000. There were three bridges in Portage and Trumbull County done in 2024 at an average cost of $564,000, and that's in Ohio, our construction costs. So 25, and it's $27.5 million over 22 years, not 25 million, 27.5. I would suggest that a job that probably is worth about six, let's just throw it to $8 million. You need to come up with a better reason and show us something that justifies taking $27.5 million from the taxpayers, that we are two things. One, we lose the use of that money, which means we're going to pay interest for whatever we buy with the money we don't have. We'll have to borrow it to replace this money with services. That's number one. Let's consider, talk about the multi-use path. There's just no reason to believe a multi-use path is of any value. And I would ask you, this is a direct question that staff could tell us in their negotiations, what did Cedar Point say was the number of guests they thought would increase their business by people walking and riding bicycles over there? If you're putting in a multi-use path, as you stated, you put it here to increase the business in Cedar Point, pedestrians and cyclists. Any good business says, if I'm going to spend $20 million on it, I got to figure out how many people are going to use it. So if you had good detailed discussions that came up with this, and again, I work with what you've provided, so when I'm done, you can discuss the real additional reasons why you think it's a great idea to give them $25 million for projects that ostensibly doesn't look like it could cost more than $6, $6 or $8 million.
Additional comments from residents regarding agenda items?
Greetings, everyone. Tom Lamarcus, 20640 East Street. I've been absent, sorry, I was sick.
You're excused.
Thank you. The Six Flags million dollars a year is kind of bothering me a little bit, and I am concerned, what if Six Flags pulls the plug as they're doing in good operating parks and they're saying, well, they're really not producing to their max and they can sell off the land and, you know, they can sell off that land over at Cedar Point in million-dollar lots and forget about all those busloads of kids that they have down here at Social Security Center every morning. I see a whole new load every day. I don't know why they're short of people. And then finally, the Beckling Building coming finally home to Sandusky's city commission's lap. I asked about that about six months ago, maybe, how we were doing on that. I thought maybe it had fallen under the, between the cracks. But my concern with the building is, one, that this body existing here does not put that property then into a contract or a lease or an assignment or a sale with someone that's lurking out there between now and the end of the year. Let's take a strong look at the potential and the value of that property with the boat dock and everything else that it offers, plus the fact that we're going to need the boat dock with part of that MOU that's unsigned to provide ferry service to Cedar Point. The Beckling Building needs those bottom surfaces sealed, so if we could get that taken care of by Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarcus.
To live Garrett, 512 Scott Street. And my questions for item five and six is the TIF agreement. And for the TIF agreement, I'd like to know, can you guys explain in plain terms what a TIF agreement is? And can you explain how it works? And how much does Sandusky City School get off that TIF agreement? And how long is the contracts for the Cleveland Road? And some of you guys, well, as board members, you voted on this TIF. And to me personally, it's, I think it's conflict of interest, and now your city commissioner is going to benefit off the TIF to build a boardwalk and a kayak deck. And I always want to know, the school is below 50% of the state of Ohio, and I was wondering how you guys feel about building a boardwalk, big sidewalks, maybe a lighthouse for kids' education? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Additional comments from the public on agenda items? I think we've run out of comments. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have eight items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Item A, approval of Parks and Recreation Independent Contractor Agreement with KP Gymnastics. This is a first reading. Item B, approval of payment to Retsel and Andrus LPA for professional services. Item C, approval of change order one and final for Market and Warren Street Reconstruction Project with Yuri Blacktop. Item D, approval of change order one and final for Camp Street Resurfacing and Reconstruction Project with Precision Paving. Item E, approval of change order one and final for demolition of 1528 Columbus Avenue Project with Purdue. Item F, approval of encroachment license agreement for 104 through 110 Columbus Avenue. Item G, permission to dispose of unneeded item. Item H, approval of application for National Coastal Resilient Fund Grant for Lyons Park Project.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and a resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murray.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through H and declaring that all ordinances and resolutions as drafted and presented to the city commission shall take effect in accordance with sections reflected in accordance with section 13 or 14 of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes, except abstain as to items A and C.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions?
Mr. Murray?
Yes, except abstain as to items A and C.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are approved. Before we begin our regular agenda, I'm going to take one of the few prerogatives the President of the Commission has, and that is to rearrange the agenda. It's an awesome responsibility, but I believe it makes more sense to reverse items five and item six. I'm reading through my packet. I think it makes more sense to vote on the legislation that would be approving the landing project prior to voting on legislation that provides inspection services for that project. So if we reverse those two, Ms. Myers, can you get to them? It'd be great. I'll go present item number one. Ms. Myers, we'll get started.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Six Flags Entertainment Corporation relating to the renovation of Cedar Point Causeway and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I vote for the, I move for the approval of this ordinance pursuant to section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Been a long time getting here. We've had, Mr. Klein, you've worked on this for more than a dozen years. The pathway has been something that is a real testament to the power of planning, a common, shared vision among this commission and many commissions before us, to fantastic partners that we've had in the process of developing this, to a great staff that executes on all this, to two outstanding city managers, one who sometimes imagined the most fantastical things, but we've seen many of them come true, and to our current city manager who executes like no one I've ever seen. He just gets stuff done. It's really been an amazing thing that a 207-year-old city could carve out a new waterfront park. And this will be something that will be a benefit to our citizens here and unborn for really decades to come. It's an amazing thing that's been developed, so I'm very happy to support this. There are a couple of different related pieces of legislation. I'll address some of the questions that were, or comments that were made. The admissions tax, pardon me, the parking tax generates about $500,000 a year. That is, at 8%, that generates, that means that Cedar Point is receiving a total of about $6.25 million in parking taxes. So there were some numbers discussed before that do not, that are not consistent with the facts. And in terms of having to do this, we made an agreement years ago. We've been the beneficiaries of that agreement. It's now time for us to uphold our end of that bargain. This is an important piece of infrastructure in the city of Sandusky. It's right that we contribute some small portion to it. Again, the figures that were bandied about in terms of the construction costs are far short of where those are going to be. This is a project that's going to cost in the tens of millions of dollars, I'm quite certain. And should Cedar Point leave Sandusky, it will be a breach of the agreement, and we would discontinue any further payments. I think that's pretty clear in the document itself. So they have to maintain a presence here in Sandusky, and they have to continue to remit the admissions taxes and the parking taxes. And should they fail to do so, then our obligation under the agreement would cease as well. So I'm confident this is the right thing to do, and I will support this legislation and the related parts and pieces.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coates.
I know that this unfolded particularly as it relates to the Causeway project long before I was on the city commission, but I like to think about these issues as I would had I been there. And this is one that I do have a problem with, and particularly because of, you know, when we start talking about negotiation, I'm always thinking about ways that that money can also come back and benefit specifically the residents inside our city. So for that reason, I'm not going to actually support it. And I'm not going to really kind of beat this horse to death because you've done the work on it, but that's where I'll be standing.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pajali.
Just a comment. I agree with Mr. Murray. We did do this deal, so we should follow through with this deal. And the fact of the matter is, if Cedar Point hadn't come up with this money, we wouldn't even be talking right now. So both sides have something to gain here. And I also think that the talk about Six Flags closing parks, I think they're closing two parks, and maybe it's addition by subtraction. So we'll see what happens.
Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Mr. Crable?
Well, a couple of observations. One, earlier commission engaged in the conversation with then Cedar Point and came up with an MOU on this. Whether Cedar Point executed a formal letter of acceptance or not, they were involved in the negotiations, and we were involved in negotiations, and we, in essence, made a commitment to Cedar Point. You can, you know, good people are going to differ on this. You can argue, well, that it should have been sweetened in this way or it should have been different in that way. It is what it is. And it's before us now, and I think it would be a very bad precedent for this commission to not honor a commitment that was made. Be it a verbal commitment, be it a handshake, not everything has to be in formal contract terms, but a commitment that was made at the time, I think, would be unfortunate. And not just unfortunate in this instance, I think unfortunate going forward. This, should we not approve it, I think sends a message, may send a good message to somebody, but it also sends a message to people who might be looking to invest in this community. And if we are not good to our own word, that's a problem. As for the suggestion that, you know, what if Six Flags decides to sell Cedar Point and build condos or houses or something out there? Number one, it's probably their premier park. I think that the chances of that are slim. But as was noted, they would be in breach at that point. We would back out of the agreement, out of our commitment to them, and any debt that they have incurred in order to build this, and I wouldn't be surprised that they're using some kind of debt instrument to finance this, that's on them. It doesn't reflect on us. So those are my thoughts and why I will be supporting this.
Additional comments, Commissioners? Mr. Murray?
I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge our state representative in the back of the room, who's been a wonderful partner of the city of Sandusky on lots of capital projects. DJ Swearingen is here with us, and we appreciate all that you've done for us, in particular with respect to this project. We probably have many points of differences, and I'm sure we could debate those for many hours, but when it comes to these kind of projects, it's a shared vision, and we really appreciate the money that you've brought to us and the support that you provided to our community in Sandusky. So thank you.
Our representative is going to get an opportunity on item number five and six, I can tell you that.
I see. Okay, good. Well, he can take a swing at the path.
I'm sorry. I'm perfectly aware that we had an MOU that expired, and I like the time it's taken us to get this to the finish line. But this was a good deal then, and it's a better deal now. And I certainly support it, and I'm thankful that we stuck with it and all the staff that have finally got this to the finish line. Thank you for your hard work, because that's what it's taken to get it there.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
Could I ask, just insert one more thing, and maybe Michelle can help in this regard. But my understanding is that the total tax revenue from Cedar Point, from the tax that they place on the parking and all, is $9 million?
We've collected over $9 million since 2022 in admissions tax alone. Last year, the parking tax was almost $500,000. I think it was $470,000 last year. So those combined are about $9.5 million.
All right. So we're spending back as part of this agreement. Again, our word that we would do this, we're spending back 25% or 27% or something back to Cedar Point to help with this project. And I do have a quick question, and I don't know if, maybe it was in the packet and I didn't manage to see it, but is Cedar Point, as part of this roadway construction project, also doing a water and sewer line? Is that part of the scope?
Mr. Morris, I could look like you might have the answer to that.
We don't have the final details as far as what they're going to do. They have an option to move, they talked about moving the water and sewer line to where the pathway is going to be. That would be at their expense. The other is leaving it in place where it's at, so they haven't finalized that with their design yet.
Okay. I'm just, just a matter of curiosity.
Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
No.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
No.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, will you present item number two?
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving the real property donation agreement with Cedar Point Park LLC for the Beckling Building located at 105 West Shoreline Drive, Sandusky, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
So it's important to note that part of this agreement that we have, what alters the Beckling Building, provides that we have 180 days of due diligence in terms of proceeding to actually accept the contribution. We know something about the building's condition, and what we don't know is how we would fund the improvements to the building. It's one of those buildings that it has some intrinsic value, but there are a lot of liabilities that go along with the building because it's, like many old historic buildings, it's old and historic. It's going to be difficult to repair, expensive to repair, and has to be done according to very exacting standards. So I'm sure that this commission or the next one that's going to be right on the edge will have to evaluate that at that point in time. But that is a contingency that's built into the agreement.
Point.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray. Mr. Murray.
What about sheet piling around the Beckling Building? I know we did the pier. Has anybody, have we researched that or have any information on that? Because that's very costly. You're looking at millions to do that.
I expect that to be part of the due diligence as we go, as we perform that. Mr. Klein, you have any thoughts on that?
Several years ago, Cedar Point had done some, an evaluation of it and I don't remember the exact number of what it was, but I do know that there was an evaluation done and there was some work that is needed on the sheet piling. I don't remember the exact number.
So we will do that due diligence in another 180 days and come up with, with what the repairs are costing, where we're going with that.
Yeah, we'll dive more in depth into that report again and look at it a, a second time and figure out what might be needed.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you call the rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, ordinance number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed providing for the issuance and sale of $3,806,000 notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of, one, paying the costs of various improvements for the landing is more further described and approved in ordinance number 18-127; two, paying costs of various improvements to Jackson Street Pier; three, paying costs of the construction of and various improvements to the Sandusky Bay Pathway; and four, paying the costs of reconstruction of Columbus Avenue between cer- certain termini as further described and approved in ordinance number 24-101 and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
May I jump in first? We need to approve the fiscal officer's certificate first on each piece of legislation.
We just need a motion for that, don't we?
Yes.
So moved.
A motion and a second, as far as you call discussion, as far as you call the rule on that motion.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you call the rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Fiscal officer's certificate is approved.
Thank you.
Now we can go forward. I think we had a motion and a second to that, to that ordinance, did we not? Did we have a motion?
No, we were waiting.
Do we have a motion?
We, we had a certain insertion of business there.
We've had, we've had that ordinance read, though.
We have. I move to approve item three, ordinance one.
Second.
An a motion and a second. Now we can have a discussion. Ms. Freeter, I wonder if you'd just give us a brief overview of exactly what we're accomplishing here. I know this is something that we do somewhat on a regular basis, but we're adding, adding more dollars here to cover, to cover some unusual expenses.
Absolutely. So last year, when we did the note issuance, we issued notes for the amount of $4,785,000. As you can see in the legislation, there's the landing design, Jackson Street Pier Project, Pathway Project, Columbus Avenue Streetscape was in that note for last year. We're paying down almost a million dollars. We're looking to pay down at least $979,000 this year. In addition to the amounts that we're rolling over from last year, we want to plan to roll over, or I'm sorry, introduce eight million dollars into the notes this year. That would be for the Landing Park Project, which is coming up on legislation here tonight. So the 2025 note issuance would be for $11,806,000.
Thank you, Ms. Freeter. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
My understanding is the eight million dollars that you have packaged in here is with the presumption that we passed the landing project. If we do not, that would be backed out of there.
Absolutely correct.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate Michelle on, on the thought process here. These are notes. They're essentially one-year notes. We're in a very high interest cycle, point of interest cycle. Hopefully by this time next year, we'll see interest rates ameliorate a little bit and we'll be able to get a better deal on it and pay, pay less in the way of interest. But in the meantime, with the landing project, for example, we have to be able to pay the bills as they come in. So this is how we do it.
Additional comments or questions? As far as you call the rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, ordinance number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed providing for the issuance and sale of notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed eight million dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purchase of paying costs of construction, reconstructing, renovating, installing, and otherwise improving recreational parks and facilities within the city, including the landing, together with all necessary at pretenses, therefore, and otherwise improving the sites thereof, and declaring an emergency.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
If I may again, we need to approve the fiscal officer's certificate for this piece of legislation. There are two different ones.
So moved.
I don't know what I'd do without you on that.
Second.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Then a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number four.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2025 USDA tree planting project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how would you like to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coates.
Move for approval of this resolution under item four and in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Freeter, you don't need a certificate for that item, do you?
No, we will happily accept funds.
Comments or questions, commissioners?
Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
We have, we haven't had this discussion in the last year and a half, I don't think. Mr. Klein or someone else, maybe it's Ms. Gilson that would follow up on this, but we periodically had staff come in and talk to us and the public about the importance of the tree canopy in the city. Most cities have less than 10% tree canopy coverage. I think we're in that group. We have been an outstanding, what do we call it, Tree City USA for a long, long time and we want to maintain that. But the tree canopies are great for so many different things, for stormwater absorption, for property values, for cooling, and just a lot of really, a lot of other impacts that are very, very positive. So it's occasionally good to have that refresher and I hope at some point in the next period of time, I won't put a, a date on it, we'll have that again.
It does please us that we, up until now, and even now, we're doing this on someone else's dime, the great majority of it on someone else's dime. So that is, that is certainly, certainly dollars well spent, not, not being a burden on our residents to do that. It is quite a, quite a attribute for our city. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
I'm part of the tree commission and my concern was, I brought it up at our last meeting, is if you drive around town, the young trees that we've put in, they're really, a lot of them are really stressed out as far as, I know we've had a lot of heat, a lot of dry weather, but we got to keep them watered some way better.
Aaron, do you have something?
Two things. The first one, Elizabeth Soweki, who is the contracts coordinator for the city, she's been working on a presentation for the past couple of months and getting ready to come in and she's hoping to come in sometime in the, in the next three, four months to do the presentation regarding the trees. If there are trees, to Commissioner Wantington's point, if there are specific trees that you see that are like that, I know there are several out at Churchwell Park that were planted that look questionable, but if there are other trees that are planted, please let me know. I know that our forestry department does an amazing job of keeping them watered, doing young tree training and making sure that they're trimming them and they, they water the trees for two years before they stop going through that process. And if they look like they need longer, they're going to continue it. One of the good things about this project is that the staff has decided to hold back about $5,000 worth of funds to buy 100 watering bags as well that will go on these trees to ensure that they are staying watered on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Now here's where it gets tricky. Ms. Myers, you present item number six.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing the city manager to enter into a design-build contract with Mosier Construction Incorporated Fremont, Ohio, for the landing project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
An a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Chair. Mr. Coates.
Just so I'm not confused, I want to remain consistent. I actually might have missed one of these, but anything related to the TIF because of my role with the school? And I thought I saw something previously that basically said a TIF might have been included here, but am I wrong?
You're right.
Okay.
I know there's TIFs.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll remain consistent on upstanding.
Thank you, Mr. Coates. Representative Swerengen, this is your turn at the plate. Before you get there, I will echo Mr. Murray's comments. We, we as a city are, and as a commission, are so thankful for the financial contribution that you have, have made, that the state has made to us on this. Literally, this would not be getting done if, if you were not involved in this and this was not, was not state money. Three million dollars, really 3.7 million dollars when you count all the, all the state money in this is very significant. And, and I would be remiss if I did not, did not mention that we are not the only recipient of your hard work. I have noticed that dollars are being spent on a lot of different projects throughout your district and they, they seem to not maybe benefit Sandusky, they all benefit Sandusky. Because as, as this area, as our boat rises, everybody's boat rises. So, so thank you for your efforts and, and thanks for being here tonight. I think we, this has been a tough slog for engineering, for staff. The, the easy part was not getting the money. You did that, but the hard part for us was getting it across the finish line and making it fit into a budget that, that we could afford.
Yeah, well, I'd just like to thank the commission for their time spent on very important matters. I like to say that all politics are local. Those are the best politics. Unfortunately, they can sometimes be the most tense, which I understand and appreciate, but, you know, we all live in the same community and regardless of opinions, one way or the other, I hope we all, you know, get together, which I've seen this commission work very hard to do and I appreciate that. I would say the state is very high on our area right now. You know, it's easy to go to Columbus, in my opinion, and sell our area to my colleagues as to why our area is a good place to make an investment of state dollars. You know, these are not our dollars, these are taxpayer dollars, so we want to be very responsible, very conscientious with how those are spent. I'd like to thank city manager Orzak for, for his efforts on this project specifically. The last capital budget, we were very strategic and we were thankfully able to invest a lot of funding back into the 89th House District. Some of that was workforce, which, you know, is very important for our kids, education. Waste management was another priority as well as infrastructure, roads, bridges, et cetera. So we were able to do those things and also do something like this, which I think will be a very important project for the city of Sandusky and I've heard from most of you on it. You know, what we've seen increasing over the last several years is the revenue from our area generated by tax dollars is continuing to climb. And I think that's a testament to everyone's work and making our area an attractive place to raise a family, live and reside here. Or, you know, we all thank the tourists that come in and spend a lot of money in our area as well. We're attractive to them. So this is a project that I think is going to benefit everybody. You know, it's going to benefit the people that reside here full-time. They're going to be able to use it. You know, you've all been conscientious on how you spent the money on this project, which I appreciate. And, you know, the tourists that come here as well at the sports force will be able to utilize this project as well. So I think it's a win-win for everyone. And those that live in the community and those that visit our community on a transient basis will, will hopefully enjoy this. So I appreciate all of your hard work and efforts on, on this undertaking, so.
Comments or questions for the representatives?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize to your daughters for this forced civic lesson that they have. I would encourage you to get out of here pretty quickly.
Yeah. They do serve ice cream right up the street.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
One of the things I wanted to ask Mr. Klein about that I know that has been discussed along the commission here is the money is all there to build this. And could you talk to the maintenance of it a little bit? Because I think there's a lot of perceptions out there that, you know, it's going to fall apart. It's what's it being made of? How are we going to maintain it? Do we have, do we have money set aside for the maintenance for the future? Because we have to admit, it will take a beating along the shore there, especially through our winter months. So could you just speak to that a little bit?
Yes, and so a couple of years ago, when this project first came about, this was probably maybe 2020, 2021 timeframe. We did a long-term and a short-term maintenance. I had EDG put that together. So it's very explicit and very clear, not just the project that we're talking about now, but also the project at the time. It went all, it included the project that is currently under construction that goes all the way to Cedar Point Drive. So it's the bridges, it's the boardwalks, it's all of that infrastructure. One of the things that we've tried to do as much as possible is pick materials that are going to be very sustainable. For example, one of the things that actually came out of this, moving from a design bid-build approach to a design-build approach, was the contractor found that the, the wood material it's the bridges, it's the boardwalks, it's all of that infrastructure. One of the things that we've tried to do as much as possible is pick materials that are going to be very sustainable. For example, one of the things that actually came out of this, moving from a design-bid-build approach to a design-build approach, was the contractor found that the, the wood material that we were using was not as good in this environment as a different wood material. So we're actually changing it from Douglas fir to yellow pine because it lasts longer. Doesn't mean a whole ton to me, but it does mean that we're saving a lot of money and we're going to have less maintenance. We're looking at the landscaping. We're going to back some, quite a bit of that landscaping out of the original project scope to make sure that we can have staff that are able to do that as well. One of the things that we are very aware of on this project is we know that if we shortened some of these runs or narrowed some of these things or decreased the steel that will be underwater and made them smaller, we wouldn't be able to have the, the same safety. So we are, we have designed this to allow for our safety forces to get out to the most remote locations. By doing that, we have marine coatings on the, on the steel that's going to be underwater. So there's a lot of that sustainability that's going into it while also making sure we're not negatively impacting the environment. So there's a delicate balance throughout this project. And I won't say it's not going to have maintenance, because everything does, but we're doing our best to utilize as resilient of materials as we possibly can. And I will say too, that the lighthouse that's out there, or that was proposed, we're only going to be going up to the second story, which is about 10 feet above ground, instead of going up an extra 60 feet to 70 feet above ground. So that structure, the HVAC, the electric, all of those other things, those were extremely expensive components up front for capital, but also long-term and short-term maintenance items as well. So that should help our building maintenance staff not have to worry about window cleaning and all the bugs and spiders and everything else, but also the wear and tear from the, the winters that we get here.
Thank you.
Mr. Klein, fair to say that projects like this, obviously they're going to need maintenance, but they don't, they don't fail in, in large portions. They fail one brick at a time, or one plank at a time. And I would, I mean, I'm certain that staff will stay diligent on, on keeping it as fresh and new as they can. One plank or one brick at a time. We're not going to ignore, we're not going to defer this maintenance for 25 or 30 years and then we'll find out we got to put another 10 million bucks in this to make it, make it operable. Would that be a fair statement to say?
Yes, I do know that field crews, for example, on the Jackson Street pier, they have been sealing the concrete on a, on a regular basis. So those are the types of things that, knowing those routine maintenance items, and we will get all of that information from the design-build team of exactly what those routine maintenance items are. And we will make sure that the maintenance staff is aware of what that is, so that if there is something along those lines, it can preserve it and extend the useful life as long as possible.
Additional comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask about the bridge that goes over Pike Creek. It's 13 feet high above the water, the walkway that's going over towards Kinzel Way.
Over Pike Creek or over Heminger Ditch?
Well, it's Beheminger Ditch. I call it Pike Creek because I, I've been back there at the boats. But
Okay.
Where that clears there, is that going to be closed down in the winter months? Is that going to be safe to even walk or ride a bike or anything?
This whole facility is intended to be open all year round. And that bike path is actually, whether it's the one over Pike Creek or the one that crosses Heminger Ditch, they're both extremely critical for the path that ODAT at the state level is working on that goes all the way to Huron. They need a continuous pathway to connect to on their western end. So that's something that they're making sure that we get this Heminger Ditch and, and even the Pike Creek installed. And it's going to be open year round because we certainly don't want to, as the path gets cleared and as we have those warm winter days, when I say warm, we all know that that's in the low 40s, and the, the snow is melting, we know people will be using it. And we certainly don't want to tell people to get off the pathway, get on Cleveland Road where we're plowing and we might have snowbanks and those types of things. So the intent is to keep it open year round.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I did talk to Ms. Reader earlier, and she indicated there was some money that would be set aside for maintenance and upkeep that comes along with these dollars. So I think we have that. It's, it's important to make sure we do maintain and upkeep, upkeep those, those types of facilities, because it's very noticeable when those things start to slip, like restrooms and, and just basic cleanup of the path. I, I did mention about maybe doing something with metro parks, if maybe they would be interested in. It's my understanding that we had talked to them and they weren't interested. But maybe if we circle back around and we provide some funding for them to do some of the upkeep, that, that might be a good marriage.
Recall, there was a question, a resident question regarding exactly what a TIF is and this, this project consists of a TIF. Michelle, would you be, Ms. Reader, would you be the person to give, or, or, Mr. Hastings, who, who would be most likely to give a brief explanation of a TIF?
I'll, I'll try to give a very simple explanation of a TIF. It does not, contrary to public feeling, a TIF does not result in a decrease in taxes to a school district. But if a property is being taxed at a current rate, whatever that rate may be, the TIF only applies to the added value that the project brings to that piece of land. So, and the schools will get a part of that as well. So there will be an increase in revenue to the schools, but the, and if the property stayed as it was, there would be no increase in revenue to the schools. Some of the properties that we have TIFs on, for example, even owned by, are, are public parks and lands, which the schools are getting zero currently. If they put a development on there, and the schools will get an increased benefit. And then when the TIF runs out, the schools will get all of the benefit.
And TIFs have a life, have a life.
That's right. They, they don't last forever.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Hastings. Good explanation.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Vargo.
And, and one of the other things too, in talking to Michelle and understanding that wherever the area the TIF is, you know, that's where the money can come from for a project out there. It can't be used for something that's, you know, on the other side of town typically. So I think that's important to note, because someone might say, why are you using that TIF money to build that? And you're not using it to build something that's on the west side of town. And you can't, you can't do that, correct?
That is correct. For this TIF, it was specific that it needed to be spent out there. Right.
Additional comments or questions, commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a First Amendment to the Agreement for Professional Services with Quality Control Inspection Incorporated of Garfield Heights, Ohio, for the landing project and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number seven, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of $200,000 from the United States Tennis Association for the Tennis Courts Project, authorizing the city manager to execute any grant agreements and to expend the fund consistent with the grant agreement, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Murray?
I move to adopt this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. I can tell you, I am extremely thankful for this $200,000 award, but also was extremely frustrated by it. Because I, one of the stipulations was you couldn't apply for it until, until you had a project. Well, you had to, you know, the, the schools did a wonderful job of, of raising money and the city put some money in. And I always had the feeling that we were going to get money out of this tennis association, but, you know, nothing's for sure. So you couldn't count on it. Well, what do you know? Now that we have a project and we made the application, there's $200,000. It's a, it is quite a, it is going to be quite a benefit
Yep.
to this city. And, and for those of you who have not driven by, there are not lines there, there are not nets up, but there's black mats down there, they're fencing up. And Mr. Rozak has assured me that this contract is going to be done and off that site by August 11. Is that correct, Mr. Rozak?
That's what Mr. Klein assured me.
That's called passing the
That pass.
Good, good job, Mr. Rozak.
We are on the record.
Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you call the role of that ordinance, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number eight, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to approve the First Change Order for Work Performed by Erie Blacktop Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the Tennis Courts Project in the amount of $25,226.50, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. With that $200,000 came a couple of hooks, but those hooks are easy to pay for with someone else's money at this point. Ms. Myers, you call the role in the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Abstain.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Abstain.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number nine, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed repealing Resolution Number 025-25R and declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed 2025 Parks Paving Project, approving the revised specifications and engineer's estimate of costs thereof, directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons?
Move for approval of this resolution under item nine in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the resolution.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That resolution is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 10.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with United Survey Incorporated of Oakwood Village, Ohio, for the 2025 sewer lining project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, we're getting good at lining pipes, aren't we?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Is this a company we've used before or not?
Uh, not here. I've used them several times in Elyria, and they did a good quality job.
They use the same system, though?
They use the same, similar materials, yeah. There, it's all cast-in-place pipe materials that they're using. There are two that I would like to point out real quick, if you don't mind. The, the fourth one down for MacArthur Park and the one at the bottom of the page, north of Rockwell at Hayes Avenue. The one at MacArthur Park, as we were going through that project, Sewer Cruise did a really good job of monitoring some of the existing infrastructure that was required to stay, specifically the sewers north of Perkins Avenue that ran east-west behind the houses. And we found that, that there was an eight-inch line that needed to stay. It was, it was very overgrown with trees in that area. And so Megan worked very hard to make sure that this one got put on the agenda, so that when we move forward with the next phase of that project, it can be addressed. And then that last one on, on Rockwell at Hayes, there's a connection there that looked like it could use the lining, and that sewer is what's going to be used for the rec center. So these both are very proactive approaches for future projects. So that's why the cost exceeded the budget amount by about $30,000 from the capital plan.
Comments or questions, commissioners?
Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number one.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Crimis Company Incorporated of Sandusky, Ohio, for the pickleball courts at Whitman Weaver Park Project, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
The law director challenged me earlier today in the, we want to do one of the first pickleball matches there. You still, you still laughing?
No.
My moves may not be real quick, but I'll give it a whirl.
Be the longest pickleball game ever.
On the record. Additional comments or questions? Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes. That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number 12.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving a Second Amendment to the program agreement with Welcome Home Great Lakes and Firelands Habitat for Humanity for the development of housing through the Welcome Home Ohio Program, and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Vargo.
I just wanted to again thank Ms. Gilson and her staff. This is an incredible program for some of our residents that probably weren't sure they were ever going to get to get their own home. And we're so close to seeing that first one. And maybe, Colleen, you could And, uh, maybe, Colleen, you could just share with the community the how close we are.
Uh, sure, thank you very much. Um, this is a pleasure to work on this project. Just this morning, I had a conversation with a young woman who hopes to be one of our buyers and, um, it's, it brings me great joy to watch, uh, folks be able to realize this dream. We begin staging this week for the, uh, groundbreaking at eight fifteen piers on the first new construction units, which will then be followed by eighteen seventeen piers. Both units are both sold.
Nice.
Exciting.
Commissioner, as far as you call a rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number thirteen.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that portions of certain real property owned by the city identified in parcel numbers five-nine dash zero-zero-five-four-three, five-nine-zero-zero-five-four-four, and five-nine dash six-four-zero-zero-six located at the northwest corner of Harrison Street and West Adams Street, Sandusky, are no longer needed for any municipal purpose, authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for the sale of the designated real property to Brian Huntley of Peerless Stove and Manufacturing Company and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes, I would move approval of this ordinance, uh, and in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
I'd just like to applaud the work of Mr. Orzak and Ms. Gilson on this particular project. It's, I think it's a win-win for both parties.
Yep.
And, uh, I think it kind of came to fruition from one of our meetings one Friday before we get together in caucus, so I'd just say, good job.
Good job, everybody. Additional comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd just like to recognize Mr. Huntley's in the back and he's been working really close with Ms. Gilson on this and, uh, it's a really neat story, um, that the building was his parents' and, uh, now it's going to go back to him. So, we, uh, we had some great conversation and we appreciate your interest in, uh, working so well with the city, so thank you.
Mr. Huntley, you sat through an hour and ten minutes of this meeting. You're more than welcome to come up and, and speak if you'd like to. I don't wanna put you on the spot. Take advantage of it.
While he's on his way there, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Burris.
I just wanna say thank you for your partnership, Mr. Huntley, and the city's. This was a tricky situation and it could've gone sideways. Uh, and the parties sat down and they negotiated over their mutual interests and they found something that worked, so we're able to keep up. An institution, uh, in Sandusky that's been here since nineteen forty-two and, uh, congratulations to you and, uh, your team and your family for continuing that work.
Well, thank you. And, and thank you to the city as well for working with us. Yes, we've been here for a long time and, um, I wanna make sure Peerless stays here. I'm gonna stay here as long as I can, work as long as I can. Uh, but we've been here for a long time. We're a hundred and six years in business, if you guys didn't know that. Started in Columbus, like eighteen ninety-eight, nineteen nineteen's when we started making commercial pizza ovens and we're still making them and we're doing pretty good for a small company and we, we're glad to be in Sandusky. We put Sandusky, Ohio on all of our advertisements, so we, wherever we go, we go a lot of trade shows, so we're proud to be in Sandusky as well. So, and I appreciate the city working with us. We're gonna fix up the building, we're gonna make it look good, so.
Chairman, is it fair to say that if any of us have eaten a pizza in our lives, we've, we've used your product?
Pretty fair, it's, pretty fair to say. Uh, there's about fifteen of them in town.
Yeah.
Right downtown, the Daleys, um, VFW Orioles Club.
Sure.
Pure Down Club.
Thanks for sticking with our city all these years. Oftentimes, cities, for whatever reason, uh, give small businesses an opportunity to leave or go to a township or another county or somewhere else, but you, you've stuck it out literally in the, in the heart of Sandusky and through thick and thin you've been with us.
Yeah, we, we try to stick around.
And I personally am thankful that we don't have to move that beautiful sign that you purchased from.
I do and I thank you for helping me build that sign. I will tell you that it did help people from, uh, the kids, although we did get vandalized over the weekend. Um, for the most part, it did keep the vanizing down a little bit 'cause they now know there's a business in there.
Yeah.
Before, they just thought it was an empty building and they would just throw rocks at it constantly. But with the new sign, it, it's helped us a great deal. So, it, it's been a very good thing. But my family's been in this town a long time. Um, I think my, my great-great-grandfather was one of the first superintendents of the waterworks.
Jeez, wow.
I believe so. And so, but no, we're proud to be from Sandusky.
Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Hastings.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out to the commission, for those sharp-eyed people who later read the contract that we are going to eventually sign, that we got a request this afternoon to change the name of the purchaser. It's still a company owned by Mr. Huntley, uh, to be formed yet, it's gonna be an LLC. Uh, and I believe under our ordinance, we have the standard clause that allows the law director to make, uh, changes that don't substantially affect the interest of the city. And when we do find the exact name of the entity, we will change it to that.
Thanks for putting that on the record and I think we're all good with that anyway.
Yeah. I hope he didn't overcharge Mr. Huntley as much as he did us. Signs are expensive.
Mr. Brady, you got to go to the rest of the disco.
Oh, my God.
That's double, whatever you want.
That's right.
Ms. Myers, you call a rule on the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number fourteen, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a five-year contract with Omni Fiber LLC of Mason, Ohio for internet services and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item fourteen in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number fifteen.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an addendum to the Managed Services Agreement with DataServe Integrations LLC of Westlake, Ohio for professional services related to the city's network infrastructure and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
Uh, I move approval of this ordinance under section fourteen in full accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number sixteen, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving a new fee schedule established for the police department for the preparation and production of video records requested under the Ohio public record laws and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call a rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number sixteen, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed approving a new fee schedule established for the police department for the preparation and production of video records requested under the Ohio public record laws and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to take time, uh, to thank Chief Oliver for taking time out to talk to me about, uh, this proposal. And he explained everything quite well and actually, uh, you know, kind of enlightened me about, um, a certain segment of the population and that's folks who actually post these videos to YouTube to try to get hits and make money off of them, right? And I can only imagine how much time is taken from people who are doing that in this social media age. Um, so I had a few concerns, um, outside of that as well, but that definitely made me see another side of this issue. And the other issue that I had was with regard to ensuring that those who are victims of crimes and those who are defendants actually have the opportunity to get the video, which there is no charge for that because that becomes a part of their case. So those individuals are able to do that and I started thinking that if somebody wanted to assist either of those individuals, right, they most likely would come to those individuals and say, hey, I need a copy. I know that's the case because I've done the same thing before when somebody came to me. So that takes care of that particular issue. The other issue that came up when I thought about it was this idea, because I, if I remember correctly, the state actually decided that we could do this, they placed that ceiling of seventy-five dollars per hour, right? And so my thinking is, why seventy-five dollars per hour, right? Uh, I always think about, okay, maybe a deterrent, but I also think about what are the man-hours involved, right? Do we have folks making seventy-five dollars per hour that actually do the work? Um, but then you explained it and, and I liked your explanation, so do you mind, um, publicly, you know, revealing for those who are here and those who will see this, um, what you said?
I, I don't, sir. Um, there's only three of us currently, actually four of us currently at the police department who can make redactions. Myself, uh, a patrol commander who's a lieutenant, who's in charge of our patrol operations, obviously, our support commander who's also a lieutenant, who's in charge of all investigative work and administrative work, and a part-time staff who also provides security to the municipal court. So, where we're at currently with public records requests as they come in, I, I would say in my estimation eighty percent of them are commercialized requests from what I see and, and what, what I have in front of me. I don't wanna pull my patrol commander or my support commander away from their routine duties, day-to-day activities, so sometimes this leads into overtime and sometimes that overtime can get very expensive. And, and then all we're doing is providing a record that is then going to YouTube, TikTok, and other places and it's, it's posted and people are commercializing it and there's a money incentive. And that's why the state got out in front of this in April because, again, we're Sandusky, just imagine Cleveland, Toledo, Columbus, you know, and that's, that's what, that's what, it's, it's going on throughout the state, so.
Gotcha, gotcha. One more question, um, related to that because folks would ask this, of course, um, but as it relates to the time spent, um, those individuals who are pulled off of, or maybe they have some time to actually do this work, um, to ensure that the, the hours, because I think the maximum time is ten hours at seven hundred and fifty dollars, but then if it goes over that, there is, uh, an additional charge that can, cannot exceed, I think it's twenty percent of the total.
So, we can't exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars. So, if it's maxed out, and that's what maxed out is, if we make a determination that this, we're gonna estimate this is gonna cost five hundred dollars, we can't charge you an, an additional twenty percent if we go over that.
Okay.
It's on us.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions?
Welcome.
Ms. Myers, you call a rule on that motion.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present our last item, item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds to AG Pro Companies of Memorialville, Ohio for the emergency purchase of replacement parts to the repair the Vector truck for the sewer maintenance division in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents and declaring this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with section fourteen of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
Uh, I move approval of this ordinance under section fourteen of the city charter.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, are you familiar with this piece of legislation?
Yes.
Does that, that doesn't sound like a lot of parts to me. It sounds like an engine, would that be right?
Yes, it's rebuilding the engine for this vehicle. It's the Vac Truck.
Yeah.
That sucks out the sewers and it's, uh, it's a proprietary, uh, specialty item that needs rebuilt by, uh, specialty manufacturers. So we got the two quotes from the people that we know that do the work on a John Deere engine like this, so.
And he give, wanna give you a timeframe on what, how long this is gonna take?
Uh, we do have that, it's in the quote. Uh, I did not write it down. I apologize, I can get that information.
We're not gonna be without this for six months or something?
No, 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 no. It'll be quicker than that.
Okay. Great, thanks. Additional comments or questions? Myers, you call a rule on that motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that ordinance is passed. The law director general will turn to our city manager for his.
Good evening, commissioners, audience, and staff. We have, um, a lot of donations tonight. Um, the Sandusky Police Department and Fire Department both received, um, from VFW posts forty, or twenty-five, twenty-nine, um, ten thousand dollars, um, for each department to be used for purchasing equipment. I'd ask for a motion to accept both of those donations.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks, twenty thousand dollars, terrific.
Big deal.
Sandusky Fire would like to thank Timothy Ryan for donating four twenty-five-dollar gift cards to Toff Dairy. This donation was made by Mr. Ryan as a thank you for Sandusky Fire Department members assisting him in replacing the ropes of his flagpole at forty-twelve Venice Road. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to all the folks.
Sandusky Fire would like to thank Timothy Ryan for donating four twenty-five-dollar gift cards to Toff Dairy. This donation was made by Mr. Ryan as a thank you for Sandusky Fire Department members assisting him in replacing the ropes of his flagpole at forty-twelve Venice Road. Get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. For our thanks to those gift cards.
The next bunch is for Park and Rec. Um, would like to thank Kim Smith for juice boxes and popsicles for the kids at summer break camp. Um, Mr. Liel for donating four boxes of ice cream cups and spoons for summer break camp. Um, also would like to thank Walmart for their award of the Spark the Good Grant of one thousand dollars. This will be put towards staff costs for a mini camp called Kicking It at Mills, August eighteenth through the twenty-first. And Parkview Community Chapel funds for their one thousand dollar donation to Mills Rec. If I get a motion to accept all of those donations.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to all the folks.
And then Public Works would like, uh, to ask for approval to accept the donation of color coding materials for the tennis court project totaling three hundred dollars from Thor Works to accommodate the blundered lines for the youth play. If I get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks to Thor Works.
And they made another donation with, um, all the materials other than that, so.
I think thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Project already.
No kidding.
Thirty thousand, three hundred.
Yep. Um, so Public Works, the contractor has completed paving, sidewalk ramps, drainage, and curbing for West Monroe between Edgewater and Broadway, including Huron Street south of Monroe. So Public Works, the contractor has completed paving, sidewalk ramps, drainage, and curbing for West Monroe between Edgewater and Broadway, including Huron Street south of Monroe. Final striping and manhole adjustments are being completed in the coming weeks. Contractors will be performing the final resurfacing sidewalks and park improvements in the MacArthur Park area over the next few weeks. Thank you for your patience. For this has been a very challenging yet rewarding project. Spear Brothers and Great Lakes Demolition have done a wonderful job navigating many difficulties over the past eight months. Community Development, the City of Sandusky Property Conditions Survey Work has reached the halfway point with just over fifty percent of the city's thirteen thousand parcels having been evaluated. Surveyors are moving parcel by parcel, collecting information on conditions of structures, vacant lots, sidewalks, and more. The property inventory will be used for the purpose of setting strategy and initiatives as well as investment decisions. A full report on this work will take place at the project's completion. And Ms. Gilson's been a mother hen for those part-time employees that are doing all this work. She feeds them snacks and takes care of them regularly, so. And then Recreation, the City of Sandusky Park and Rec Division is working with Shores and Islands Ohio and the Greater Sandusky Partnership to bring the Strongman Championship League to Sandusky for an event on Saturday, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-five. There's a MOU which I've circulated to commission that defines the roles of each organization, with the City of Sandusky providing in-kind services, including access to the location for the event, signage and barricades, access to power and water, public restrooms, and parking accommodations for the event. We ask for the city commission to approve entering into this MOU to expedite the planning for the event. If I get a motion to.
A motion for that effect.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair, only if Mr. Wantington is competing. Is he competing?
I agree.
Are you gonna be competing?
I don't know if I got any left. Maybe a stone left. I could still.
He's gonna, he's gonna be too tired after our pickleball game.
After the pickleball match.
I get tired watching kids.
That's gonna be a little tougher than the pickleball match.
That's exciting.
Mr. Murray, if you call a rule on that motion.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that motion has passed.
That concludes my report. I'll take any questions that you have.
Questions or comments for the city manager?
Chairman. We would be remiss if we didn't address the public concern about fireworks. And I know the Sandusky Police Department was active, very proactive this time, and did nab a few people and issue some tickets and maybe arrests, I'm not quite sure. And I had shared with the manager and the police chief that some communities are moving to drone enforcement. It's a different way of enforcing the fireworks codes. What they do is they cite the property owner for a nuisance as opposed to the individual. So we'll have to see how that works out, but it sounds like it's something that'd be promising in the future. There's been some discussion also about reducing the number of days that fireworks are permitted in the city. Maybe we do that, maybe we don't. I'd be supportive of that. If we do, the problem always with that is that, you know, we still, we still largely rely on voluntary cooperation with that because obviously the SPD can't be everywhere, every place, and catch every single violator of fireworks ordinance. So, but if that's where some, if that's what the commission wants to do, I'd certainly support that.
Mr. Chair.
No, I was, I'm glad that Commissioner Murray actually raised the issue because that was one of my concerns as well, and it came up at coffee with commissioners. And there were a few things that were mentioned, and I absolutely agreed with the fact that, you know, having eight, nine days where they could fire off fireworks is just ridiculous. That I'd be for limiting that. I don't see why it couldn't be two days, to be absolutely honest with you. But I'm interested in that conversation and doing something about it. I also believe that something has to be done to make the penalty severe enough that people think twice about even trying to violate it. I think that you have to have teeth in that. So I'm interested in that conversation.
Mr. Chairman. Dr. Wantigan.
Yep. Talking with the chief, he was at my coffee with the commission, and I know just from walking my dog and my street neighbors bitching about, you know, it's every, no, I mean, it was continuous. It was like they were supposed to end at midnight, and two, three in the morning, it sounds like a civil war is going off, you know, in Cleveland Road, McKinley Street, you know, where I live at. And it's nuts. I think we gotta have a judge that's gonna make this thing mandatory with the fine. None of this, how many times have we cited people in the past, you know, years since I've been on the commission? And they go down, well, he's in between jobs, we'll let you go, you know, don't do it. So we need somebody that's gonna be hard, I wanna say hardcore, and make it a mandatory, we got it. Can we raise that amount down, Mr. Murray?
I'd ask the law director that question.
You mean like a fine or a penalty?
Yeah, a fine, like.
Yes, no, home rule allows us to make any misdemeanor, if first degree misdemeanor.
I would like to, I would like to have that conversation, or could you look into that, where we could raise it up? And that way, I think if you cite two or three people and you gotta come up with seven, eight hundred bucks and maybe get an attorney, that might change the volume a little bit. That's just, you know, my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
Mr. Wantington, Commissioner Wantigan, I absolutely agree with you. We can raise it to, is whatever we wanna raise it to, but as you pointed out, it has to be pulled through in the courts. They have to. They have to make a demand for it. They have to collect the money. They have to follow through. So somehow, some way, we've gotta, we've gotta really work on that with them. And for those people, I know they love fireworks, but they were even going on after Fourth of July for, just last night, they were going off still. And, you know, if you don't have pets, or you don't have a person who maybe suffers from, you know, PTSD, even in our community, we have a lot of veterans that suffer from these things, and it is scary. It's very scary. Sometimes you're like, are those gunshots or are they fireworks? It's very, you're not sure what to do. And so ultimately, though, we have to pull through the penalty. So we've gotta, we've gotta really try to figure out how to get that done.
Just a suggestion, but how about, how about we use this moment right now to give direction to staff to do just that, to increase the penalty. And what do you think about decreasing days?
Absolutely.
What's the matter with getting down to the days?
Too many days.
I mean, I know that puts.
What is it, Craig?
I think, what is the current numbers, like six or seven now?
Well, there's so many more days than that. The days that Commissioner Coons was originally speaking about is the area around Fourth of July. That's where a lot of it is. So I think there's nineteen days or twenty-two without counting them all, but around Fourth of July, it's the Friday, Saturday, Sunday before the Fourth of July. It's the third, fourth, and fifth of July, and then it's the Friday and Saturday, Sunday that immediately follow the Fourth of July. So this year, Fourth of July was a Friday, right? So Saturday, the fifth, was still legal, and then so was Sunday because that was Sunday immediately following the Fourth of July. So the weekend before the Fourth of July, the third, the fourth, the fifth, and then the sixth was legal this year between four and eleven fifty-nine PM. Now, there's other days. There's New Year's Day, the Chinese New Year's Day, the fifth day of May, the last Monday in May, and the Saturday and Sunday immediately before Memorial Day. There's a couple of ones there. Then you got June ninth, you got Juneteenth, the nineteenth day of June. You have those areas around the Fourth of July, just explained. You have the first Monday of September, which is Labor Day, and then you have the Saturday and Sunday immediately following Labor Day, or I'm sorry, immediately preceding Labor Day. So Labor Day weekend, Memorial Day weekend, an area around the Fourth of July, then you have a certain holidays, New Year's Day and Juneteenth. So there's several out there. The conversation at coffee with commission, not, you know, Commissioner Wantington was there, so was Jolly, Commissioner Coons. The frustration level was there were so many days around Fourth of July. And there are, right? It's, it's just a matter of whatever direction the commission wants to go with the ordinance. Obviously, we're gonna enforce the ordinance, what that is. I will speak to the penalties. It's a misdemeanor of first degree, so it's punishable by up to six months and/or a thousand dollars, but there is no mandatory amount. That is completely discretionary when it reaches the court. So if you're talking about having some sort of penalty, you need to determine what do you wanna see the mandatory penalty be. I'm not talking about days in incarceration, but if there's a fine amount that you'd like to see to have a little bit of deterrence to this, then that would be entirely up to.
But that mandatory penalty can be waived by the judge.
Well, it's discretionary to the judge. The judge is the sentencing authority. He determines what that is gonna be.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Charlie.
I would certainly support fewer days, even the idea of a drone. I didn't, I didn't think about that.
It's not enforceable here locally. The drone, to his point, would be to the resident. We have to identify the individual responsible, the way it's written currently.
Okay. My other suggestion would be that before we do anything, maybe we sit down with the judge and see what he is willing to enforce, and then tailor our ordinance to what the judge is, especially with a new judge coming in. Yeah, we have a brand-new judge coming. Get their buy-in first, so, so we have that partnership going into next year, the fireworks season. That's just my suggestion.
So that's a discussion that won't happen until after the election?
Right.
Probably. Okay.
But that may give staff time to look into different avenues.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable.
Yeah, it strikes me as odd that a person would have the money to buy a great deal of fireworks, but then couldn't pay the fine, whether they're working or they're not working. In any event, the other, and I echo my support with everything that's been said here about eliminating the number of days, the fines, all of it. The, the one thing about the drones, I'll just share this experience. I'm working on that property over in East Monroe Street. I learned the day after July fourth, on the fifth, I was working. Neighbor came over and shared with me that some folks from the neighborhood thought it would be a good idea to use the parking lot there to fire off fireworks. So I would've been the one fined by the drones. So we have to think a little bit about that, I would say, because otherwise I'm gonna have to put up guard towers and walls to keep people out. But no, I do think that we need to do something to get some control over this, because it's just, if you live in town, forget about sleep. It's just not possible.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Goode.
Just one more comment. And just for clarification's sake, chief, you said nineteen days, and probably right off the top, some people were thinking about Fourth of July, but you were actually talking about all the other days and holidays where people could actually shoot fireworks, right?
Yes, sir.
And so, and this is to Commissioner Pajali's point about getting some feedback from judges. Yeah, I agree, but I think getting the feedback from potential judges now and current judge now, right? Because you can always hold them accountable for what they said, right? Because I'm thinking about the holidays that are coming up. And so if we have to make it through five months and still not have anything that has teeth, then it's a problem.
Great.
Yep.
Well, I would, Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I would make two, two requests. I would, I think there's a consensus that we wanna reduce the number of days, and so rather than try and craft that by committee, I'd like to ask that staff recommend to us some legislation that dramatically reduces the number of days on which fireworks are permitted, something like on the order of seventy-five to eighty percent reduction, so that we're only talking about a handful of days that are left. And then we can consider, and then we can float that by email, and we can provide, not group response, but we can provide some response, some direction to whoever it is that's spearheading that effort. And the other thought would be that as this drone, I mean, Commissioner Crable makes an important point. He shouldn't be cited in that circumstance. It would be good for, I guess this really, so we'd be talking about a revision to our, our, I guess, our zoning regulations. Is that what, isn't that what it would be? Or planning, I'm not really quite sure where that, where that falls. I don't know if that has to go through the Planning Commission or not, whether that's legislation that goes through there. But if we're citing someone for a nuisance, seems to me that's part of the property code, and that's where that would go. But, you know, we don't know, the chief indicated that we don't have the authority in Sandusky. I presume we could, we could, by legislation, adopt that authority, provide that authority. But that, again, is something that would have to evolve through the Planning Commission and then come here. So just over the next number of months, I would ask that staff keep an eye open to what's going on in other communities using the drones, and provide a recommendation to the commission as to whether that's something that the city ought to be considering as well.
Mr. Murray, do you have a suggestion as far as number of days you're thinking? I'm thinking two. What do you think?
Two or three.
Okay, then we're close.
Yeah.
I would, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think, do you notice that, you know, New Year's Eve, that's typically they go off, and then it's the end of it. It's, it's the Fourth of July where they go on for days before and days after. You know, I, I don't even recall really hearing them memorial on Labor Day, but maybe they do go off, just, but it is sad, because you used to look so forward to that one day of fireworks when you were a kid, and it's not even special anymore, that it is, they've taken all that away by this. But I'm for as few a days as we can get.
I think, I think without a motion, we can, staff hears what we're saying, and they can perhaps come back with some suggestions, and we can get serious about making some, but let's get serious about it. I think we're pretty resilient about getting serious about it.
Mr. Chairman, I would even suggest that the city residents who have been speaking to the commissioners, talk to staff. Make sure that, you know, we're well aware that everybody's on the same page about the kind of problem that this represents.
Additional, is it still under comments for the city manager, I guess? About old business, moved to old business? Any items of old business?
Mr. Chair, I think it's old business now because we voted on it. I don't know. The pickleball courts. I just, I wanted to ask when those would be, the expectation of those being completed.
Timber.
Is it this year?
I do believe it's this year, but I will get a definitive answer and circulate it.
Okay. I know people are very excited.
Mr. Klein.
I believe the legislation, the agenda item says September thirtieth.
Okay, thank you.
That's pretty quick.
Yeah, September thirtieth.
Any other items of old business? Items of new business, any items of new business? Mr. Chairman. Mr. Wantigan.
I'd like to ask Mr. Orzak, I found out last week about that we did paint a house in the City of Sandusky finally with the YES program. We had kids from out of town coming to the City of Sandusky, and I don't know, do we need a motion, or, but I need a motion to have you look into that further. If we can do that without, I was told by past city manager, we couldn't paint houses, we'd be a liability issue. I brought it up before. Didn't you say, somebody here worked at City Hall was involved with that, too?
Ron Snyder did the house with the YES program from Huron recently. But after your comments last week, me and Ms. Gilson talked about it, and we're planning on meeting with Deb Eversall, myself and Ms. Gilson, and coming up with some criteria and guidelines in order to do that program. It'll take us a few months, but it'll be ready for next spring. So we, we don't need a motion. We're, we're got our margin orders. So we'll bring something back as soon as we have it finalized.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So that, that's in motion, that will happen?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're gonna meet, and we're, we're gonna, you know, we have to have some guidelines and that in place before we do it. But if we have a program like YES or another volunteer organization, then we'll have some criteria for that.
Under items of new business, I have a few motions that I need to clean house on here. I need a motion to set a public hearing for the tax budget at the July twenty-eighth. Maybe you can have a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. As far as you call a rule on that motion.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington? Mr. Brady?
Yes, that public hearing is set. I need an additional motion to set a public hearing for a zone tax amendment for the Board of Zoning Appeals Ordinance at the August twenty-fifth meeting.
So.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. As far as you call a rule on that motion.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Wantington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, that public hearing is set for August twenty-fifth. Now, the last item on my agenda under, under new business would be to discuss the charter review recommendations. I think you all have, your staff has furnished us with that packet of the five items that have been forwarded to us by our charter review committee. I don't intend for us to vote on this issue tonight, but I'm more than willing to open, open it up for discussion on any of the items. If you'd like to cycle through them and talk about each one, or offer your comments on each one, let's start with section twenty-five expenditures. Mr. Hastings, can you give us just a brief overview of what, what that would look like?
Yes, the current charter requires that any expenditure of over ten thousand dollars must be approved by the city commission, and any expenditure over a thousand dollars requires competitive quotations. These numbers have been in our charter for a very long time, and I think during the charter review process, Mr. Klein indicated that it takes twelve hours of staff time to prepare an ordinance for any purchase, and ten thousand dollars doesn't even buy, according to our police chief, one taser. So we did a survey of other communities in Ohio, could not find anyone that was as low as ours. Most communities allow expenditures up to, well, there's a state law provision if you don't have a charter, and right now that actually moves every year, is reset by the state. Currently, it's at seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's, I think, that's a great explanation, Mr. Hastings, and I think maybe one at a time, I open the floor for discussion regarding that, for comments or questions regarding that, if you not understand that or question that.
Oh, one other thing I wanted to add is that the way we're drafting it is that we want it clear that the city commission is in control of expenditure amount. They can set it to any number up to.
Doesn't have to be the seventy-five thousand.
Does not have to be the seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty. I'm aware of other communities that do set a lower number by ordinance, which is a much smarter way to do it, in my opinion.
Sure.
Because ordinances are much easier to change when you need.
Comments or questions regarding section twenty-five?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Wantigan.
Instead of the seventy-seven, I, I think fifty, you know, I'd like to see it go up to at least fifty thousand. I think that'd be acceptable as far as, if we put it on the ballot. I think the seventy-seven might scare a few people off, just from the past thinking about this.
So the way, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
So, so the way the Charter Review Committee recommended this to us is that the commission could, from time to time, move it up to as high as the city's limit, or state limit, but it would be up to the commission, specifically the next commission after this. If this were to be adopted, the next commission would look at this issue and set it wherever they saw fit. So it could be twenty-five thousand, it could be fifteen, it could be fifty. I mean, it'll be up to whoever's here to make that decision, and it can change from time to time. So I, I support that change. I think that we're spending a lot of money on staff time, and we're, I mean, we wanna, we wanna watch what's going on, but we don't wanna be helicopter parents either. And at ten thousand dollars, that was appropriate once, but now we're helicopter parents, so.
Mr. Chair. Comments on section twenty-five, Mr. Goode?
I could understand the need for actually increasing that, particularly as it relates to these costs, the expenditures, and how those rates go up. I think my concern would always be, how do we term, how do we determine, how do we hold accountable the individuals that we select in terms of why are they selected? Particularly if we see them two, three, four particular projects that are seventy thousand dollars. What are the mechanisms in place where we actually assess that? You understand what I'm saying? Like, how, how do we determine, okay, hey, we've got this particular company that's done this work five times. I just, I need some, some protocols, some leeway, right? I think that would be a problem. But I am in agreement that we need to increase it. But, you know, like seventy-seven thousand dollars is not like just drop in the bucket, right? Particularly if you come back to these contractors again, and again, and again.
So, Mr.
So I'm just, I'm just asking. No, that's okay. I just wanted some feedback, some, some guidance.
So, as men, it's my recollection that, Mr. Hastings, maybe you'll know this better, but I think that this, in, in other communities, there have been folks who have tried to skirt these rules. We might even have that happen here once. And those, those employees were subject to discipline and maybe even termination if they tried to stack a couple contracts. So, you know, so if you had two or three contracts that were nine, nine thousand, five hundred dollars, and you stacked all those, and it was really one project, that's a problem.
Right.
And you're violating our ordinances and our charter at that point in time. I think it's been a problem. I think people have been prosecuted even on that.
Yeah, that is a state crime to do it that way. And the employees could be required to pay the city back the money.
Right.
So when the audit is done. So, yeah, you're not allowed to break up a contract to have it less than the number. That's, that's a hard and fast rule in state law.
Right.
And that's one of the things that, we get an annual audit here. That's one of the things that the auditors will look for.
Right. No, I get that side of it. I think that what you, what you indicated is really, really important, but I think there could be another side of that, where say, for instance, we did allow somebody to get a contract, well, and we didn't have to bid it out. Well, maybe there should be some kind of rules in place where we say, uh, we worked with them a couple times this year already. We got a similar project, let's go with somebody else. That's my concern. And if there's anything that we can do collectively to wrap our minds around the best way to do that, I'd be all for it.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Farin.
The chart, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the charter amendment does require any contract over five thousand dollars to be competitively bid, or, or competitive quotes obtained. You're not allowed to keep awarding it to the same company without checking the price with other companies.
So, so, Commissioner Coons, what, what the law director's indicating is that no one's, no one's being given a free ride here.
Okay.
Everything has to be bid over five thousand dollars. That, that, you know, that stays in place.
Okay. Mr. Chair, and I, I, I know for you, Richard, it goes to process, right? You, you wanna make sure the process is followed. And I understand that. The one thing, though, I think that I've heard in the last couple of years being here about business done for us is that they do go back to people, people do win awards of contracts because of the quality of work they provide for us, and they trust the work that they do for us. And so oftentimes, the same company may be coming in and doing work for us because they bid appropriately, number one, and then we also know that choosing them, we're gonna get what we're paying for. And I think that's an important thing to do, because every time you choose someone new, you know, it's a, it's a new project. Are we gonna get the same thing that we're used to getting and the kind of work? So I think there's a. So I think there's a little balance to that. But as long as the process is followed, and I hear that from you, that that's really important.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
Yes, I support all of this. And to be quite candid, I really appreciate the way Mr. Hastings has presented this and how the recommendation has come forward, that we, as the city commission, can change it from time to time as necessary. So, you know, my feeling is, let's put it, let's get it out there and put it on a ballot.
Next item, civil service.
Yes, that would be Section 27 of the city charter. This is, as I'm sure the commission is aware, we're having a terrible time trying to hire policemen. It might go to fire soon, and other positions in the city, and other cities, I borrowed this language from other cities, where, under home rule, you know, we have the ability to set our own civil service rules from time to time. And again, that would be subject to approval of the city commission. City commission would still be in control of our civil service rules, but now we'd be allowed exercising our home rule authority to make changes in civil service that we think makes sense and allows us to become competitive in hiring hard-to-get positions.
Mr. Chairman.
Both chiefs on board with this?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with having that option available. I'm not experiencing the same issues that Chief Oliver is, because we do have an established list with 40 people on it. But his big thing is, he has to have an established list, and he has to keep restarting the process over and over. He needs that to be continually opening so he can efficiently and timely hire people that he needs. But as Stuart said, that could move to fire in the future, we don't know. So having that option available is definitely a good thing for us, too.
And Chief Oliver, you're certainly on board.
Said it very eloquently. The issues we're facing with police, to just give you a little bit of background, the way our eligibility list is maintained, you have to post for a certain period of time, let's say 30 to 45 days. You keep your list open for 30 to 60 days. You close your list, you have a meeting with Civil Service Commission, then you start the interview process, the background process. You can just bank on that being about another 30 to 60 days. Years past, you might add 100 people take the eligibility list, probably more than that when the city manager was a police officer. Our most recent test had 12 people on it. Some don't even show up for the physical agility test then. You have to have a minimum of six to even have a list. We've had to call people and actually ask them to show back up to the physical agility test, just so we had the opportunity to even hire one candidate. Every other law enforcement around here has an open eligibility. Basically, you receive an applicant, it's a qualified applicant, you can start the process of interviewing, doing a background, and going from there. There's been times where we've been down five or six officers, and we've only had two qualified candidates that we could even look at. So what we would have to do is, we would go to the academies, and we'd actively recruit cadets and say, hey, listen, we're going to be given a test in about 45 days. You just keep doing what you're doing, we'll come see you. And then when you take our test, now wait another 30 to 45 days.
Lose.
And in the meantime, you have every department around who are down officers, those candidates, they're waiting for a full-time job. I don't blame them for taking the first opportunity they can. A lot of them really want to work here, but somebody else had an opportunity and they jumped on it.
They can't wait 90 days.
Yeah. And our Civil Service Commission is just fantastic to work with. They do everything they can within their power to make this process easier on us. But until we have the opportunity to have an open eligibility list, we're going to keep having these issues, where we have to keep continuously recruiting, 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 and then asking people to be patient and wait for us, rather than go to them with an opportunity.
Mr. Crable.
Yes, the problem is so egregious, when I sat on the Blue Ribbon Committee and the police chiefs were there that one day, the other police chiefs in the county were all saying, "City of Sandusky, you got to fix this, you got to change this." As a matter of fact, I think the actual recommendation came from a different chief. I know you were probably involved in that conversation, but the problem is really obvious to everybody that is, you know, in the profession. So, yeah, this needs to go to the public, and we need a change here. Mr. Chairman.
Great.
So I support this. It's, I think it's an obvious change that we should make. But I just want to speak a little bit more generally to the process that we're going to go through here. I realize we're not going to vote on this at this meeting, we're going to vote on it at the next meeting, but I would, I would hope that we don't put more than two or three issues on the ballot, because it dilutes the message that we want to direct to the public. I think we should, in my opinion, we should pick the two or three that are most important, that are most, they're going to make the most significant changes to the operations of the city. And the others, they're all good, they're all good suggestions, I would support any one of them. But I think, you know, I think we asked the commission, we asked the voters to consider five. They're busy, they're not going to know what they're about, and we all know what happens when people don't know what something means. They just vote no, because it's too much.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Fargo.
Then I would say, if that was the case, and we came down on that, I would absolutely say this would be number one on the list. The safety of our community is number one, having best qualified officers with us is so important. So I don't see how that couldn't be one of the number one issues.
Mr. Luttrell?
Sure.
I think we agree.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCollum.
My thinking is, and I'll support whatever the commission wants to do, but my thinking is that we ask these people to participate. It took a long time, they had a lot of debate, and these are their recommendations. And we should put them on the ballot and let, you know, I've asked, why are we doing this? And it's because the stakeholders wanted it done. Well, the ultimate stakeholders are the people of Sandusky. And my feeling is, we should give them a chance to vote on these issues here. I mean, I could support any of them. The only one I had a question on was the moving the 10% to 20%.
Yeah.
I didn't know how Mr. Klein would feel about that. That's just my thought.
I think, good point, Mr. Bajali. I think, you know, sometimes we're trying to predict the future, which is almost impossible to do, but ballot fatigue is real. And I know if I'm given five, six, seven items to vote on, I lose interest, I'm old, but I lose interest pretty quickly. But I do understand your position.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Coons.
I appreciate the people who actually served on the Charter Review Committee. One of the things I wanted to ask you all, because I think it's important, right? We selected these individuals to serve, 14 individuals, and I know that people have different things going on where they can't be there all at the same time. But when it comes to that final vote, to push everything forward, I just feel there needs to be something that's written that says, set up a meeting where everybody can be there and vote on these particular recommendations, right? I think it's important, because if somebody abstains, for instance, you know, I always like to know why, right? Often, I know why, because they've either talked to me already. But in some cases, when you don't have all 14 people who we basically selected to serve, that poses a problem for me about them not participating, right? Unless I know, okay, what could the possible potential conflict be, right? You were given a job to do, right? Just, you know, vote based upon what everybody else is talking about. There's no interest that you have. And I'm not saying there couldn't be, but I'm thinking about it, like, what could it be in particular cases? I just, I didn't see that, and I think that's important. I mean, the process is what it is. I mean, they've already finished their work, but that was one thing that stood out for me, right?
Section 41, or no, advisory board, Section 29 Advisory Board is the next item.
Yeah, this parallel is actually a discussion that this commission itself had recently of amending our ordinances to allow for non-residents on occasion to participate in some of our boards and commissions. This refers to advisory boards and the, by the way, I will echo the comments that our Charter Review Commission worked very hard. There was a lot of discussion. Most of the meetings lasted the entire time allotted for them, and so this is one of the five recommendations that they made. But it also could be handled by ordinance as well.
Questions or comments? Next item. Bid in excess of estimate.
Yeah, this is the Section 41. By the way, these are just being done in numerical order, where they appear in the charter, not in order of how the Charter Commission ranked them, just so you know. The, amend Section 41 to allow bids in excess of the engineer's estimate to be accepted by increasing the percentage in excess from 10% to 20%. Now, again, this doesn't mean that if some, if the lowest bid is 20% higher, that we have to accept that bid. It's still within the control of the city commission to decide what contracts we're going to award. And if award comes in 15 or 19% more than what, you know, the engineer's estimate was, you know, this commission is free to reject it. The only trouble with putting things, and there's a difference between charter and ordinances and not having discretion in the city commission, there, it's not hard to imagine, particularly under our current charter, a bid coming in at $11,100 that exceeds 10% of the engineer's estimate, and now it has to go through a rebidding process where we have to publicly advertise. The engineer cannot submit the exact same proposal, there have to be significant changes made to it. So this is meant to give the commission a little bit of more leeway in order to decide in the right circumstances of when a contract can be awarded that exceeds the engineer's estimate.
But again, Mr. Hastings, the commission has the discretion.
Correct. The commission is still in control.
It's giving you a ceiling, but it's not.
Giving a ceiling, yeah. Right now, if the engineer estimate is $10,000 or $10,001, that means it has to go to bid, has to be approved by the commission, and the lowest bid comes at $11,200. Now, we have to spend a lot more than $1,000 in order to rebid it, re-advertise it, all those things. And there's no discretion in the commission to do anything else.
I think, I don't know for sure, but I'm guessing that this Section 41 has been around for 40 or 50 years, when perhaps things cost an awfully lot less.
Yeah, I think that is true. Although this is a percentage, and where this comes in more applicable or in high-inflationary times, we're blessed to live in low-inflationary times. But in my lifetime, I remember high-inflationary times where an engineer might estimate something that could very well come in over 10%.
Comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Crable.
Yeah, I, back to the point that was just made, it's a percent, it's not a dollar amount. So, yes, costs may go up, but it's still a relative thing by virtue of the percentage comparison. But I do have a question for you, Mr. Hastings, and that is, if the city commission actually has the discretion, we'll say, to accept certain bids that are higher than, we'll say, 18%, okay, higher than what the estimate was, that would mean that we are accepting some, we're not accepting others, we're making those kinds of judgments kind of on the fly, you know, situation by situation. Does that create liability for us, that we are treating certain situations or certain contractors one way and others in a different way?
Yeah, most bid documents are written, if you read them carefully, the city reserves the right to reject all bids.
Okay.
Where litigation happens, and I've been involved in litigation over contracts, is where a city doesn't want to accept the lowest bid, because they don't consider it the lowest and best.
No, I.
And so those can be tricky. But the, yeah, no, we always say, if the bids all came in within the 10%, we still have the right to reject all bids.
Additional comments? And I would just add this, and I think it was Mr. Bajali who made the comment. The difficulty I have with this is, it's a jump from 10 to 20, and that is a big jump. And most of the things that come before us are 100,000, million-dollar, $10 million kinds of things, and those suddenly become really big numbers. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I don't know how this works internally, so I'm looking for some guidance here. But if we had a bid that came in 18% above the estimate, and the engineer, or whoever was the one responsible for advancing that, thought there was just no reasonable basis for even recommending that to the commission, does it die there? Or does it, it's not automatically compelled or propelled to come before the commission if the staff doesn't support awarding a bid that's more than a certain amount over the estimate? Or am I wrong about that?
Mr. Klein.
Yeah, I can actually use legislation from tonight as an example, on the Parks Paving Project. That project came in well over 10% above the engineer's estimate, and we rejected it internally, and we brought it back for rebid, but we had to revise the project significantly to bring it back for rebid. So it died with us at that point. We didn't even bring a recommendation to award. If that were the case, we've always been as transparent as we can, and there's been times that we'll put it on the manager's report, just to let everybody know what's going on, that the bid came in high, and we're going back and evaluating, and it could be a few months before we make another recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mr. Klein, you're not bringing back the same project. You're either adding something, or in this case, generally, you're subtracting something or adding something to get a, you're adding, you're providing another engineer's estimate, but it's not for the same amount of work, generally speaking.
Yeah, well, yes. In this case, there can be time extensions granted, because maybe the contractors can't do it within that timeframe, so they gave you overtime pricing or things like that. So there, typically, there's design changes, there might be way the bid structured, items might be moved to an alternate, and you can change your, you know, your base bid still falls within that 10%, but you have the option to award those alternates, those types of things. The landing, we got bids in that were well over 10%, and we changed it to a design-build approach. So there's a lot of things that we can do, but we can never bring back the same project with the same timelines and present it back to you to see if we get the same thing awarded.
So there's a building safeguard.
Yes.
Thank you. Additional comments on that item? Mr. Hastings' item, Section 43, general disqualification.
Yes, City of Sandusky, Section 43, has language that parallels, but then adds to some of the prohibitions in the state ethics law. And this is a legal department-advanced position. The Ohio Ethics Law is a criminal statute. If you violate it, you can be prosecuted by the Ohio Ethics Commission. To the extent that our language is inconsistent with that or adds to that, creates a real legal quandary. One, we have no, it doesn't contain a criminal penalty. And two, and this is a way oversimplified home rule analysis, but under traditional home rule analysis, if it involves the police power of the state, which is typically interpreted to be criminal law, the city cannot make something legal which the state makes illegal or make something illegal which the state makes legal. We can change penalties under misdemeanor specifically, but we cannot create new crimes, and we cannot forgive crimes that the state of Ohio has enumerated. There's a good body of state law and court cases on the Ohio Ethics Law. The Ohio Ethics Commission has a full-time staff of lawyers there who enforce the Ohio Ethics Law and to answer questions that people might have about Ohio Ethics Law. So I think the most, the cleanest thing to do is just, we're following Ohio Ethics Law.
Comments or questions?
Chairman. It would be a good, it would be a good change to make. I've had time, I've had occasions where I had to reach out to the Ohio Ethics Commission to ask them whether I could or could not vote on something. And if you ask them far enough in advance, and you give them all the predicate facts, and they're all accurate, they'll give you a letter that you can then rely on that, so you know whether you have a conflict or not.
Yeah, no.
They're very responsive.
They are very responsive, they'll talk to you on the phone. Yeah, no, it's a good branch of our government. Yeah, no, it's a good branch of our government.
Comments or questions?
I would ask that we all do our homework on these issues and be prepared to vote on it in the next meeting because we're running out of runway. We don't, we don't ever vote on it.
Yeah, if it's going to go on the ballot, it has to be passed at the next meeting.
Exactly, and I would like to remind you, and I think I'm correct, if I'm not, by all means tell me, it will take five votes from this commission. It will not take a majority, it will take a supermajority.
A supermajority is required to put something on the charter.
To move any of these items to the ballot. So just understand that this isn't going to get done four to three, it's got to get done at least five to two.
And one thing I'd like to add, of course, the commission is free, as it's done in the past, to add additional things or take things off, as you've already mentioned.
It's not going to be term limits, I can tell you that.
Additional comments? Now, we will move to the last item on our agenda, is residents with comments regarding city business. Your opportunities, those thoughts, ask if you step to the podium, name and address, and keep your comments to the floor.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. I want to go back to item number one for one second. Maybe I didn't explain properly for understanding. What I was referring to was the $35 that Cedar Point charges people to park in the parking lot. I wasn't talking about the parking tax, I was talking about the actual $35 that they charge. If you multiply that by 1 million cars, that's $35 million that Cedar Point gets off of the parking charge. They used that money in the past, if you all recall, I'm showing my age now, when they moved the gates from the front of the causeway to back further into the park on the other side of the causeway, they used that money from the parking fee to move those gates. I don't know what they're doing with that $35 now, but if they're spending it somewhere else or handing it out to stakeholders, stockholders, shame on them. The point I was trying to make is, they have the funds to do their own causeway. I wanted to comment real quick on the letter from the Charter Review Committee. I would suggest that all commissioners view all those minutes and meetings from that Charter Review. We had extensive conversation on bringing the ward form of government to this body to either put it on the ballot or not put it on the ballot. That issue passed the review committee by quorum. We didn't have all 14 people there, but it did pass based on quorum. But it was left off of the letter based on a technicality, which I'm sure the law director can explain after I sit down, if you guys want an explanation. The last item is, a month ago, I came before this body and also the rec board about the new boat ramp docks at the boat ramp. I did receive a follow-up on that from the rec department, and it's taking up to almost a month, eight weeks, to get those issues remedied. And what I would suggest is, if we are still short-staffed whereby we cannot address these issues in a timely fashion, I recommend that you take a look at the employment numbers from 2014, back when we were closing fire stations and we were laying people off. We are still not back to the numbers of pre-2014 as far as boots-on-the-ground employees. If we cannot get these projects taken care of in a timely fashion, maybe it's time that we start spending part of our $32 million budget to getting our departments fully staffed. What we saw here probably a couple of years ago is that three, I believe, and somebody can correct me, three departments were combined for efficiency based on this issue at the boat ramp. I'm not seeing where efficiency has been improved. I may be wrong on other topics concerning those three being combined, but just based on this, it should not take eight weeks to fix this type of problem. Thank you.
Wes Poole, 1939, East Old Gate. This is in regard to the Charter Review issues. The last issue you talked about, the 10% versus 20%, I want to say about all these issues, the charter is written to protect the citizens from abuses. So, looking at it from a perspective of how, looking at any of these from a perspective of how it makes a job easier for people that we're paying to do it, is a little piece of it, but you have to look very closely at whether or not it's doing what it's intended to do, which was, in this particular case, on that issue is get us the best price. Contractors or people that sell things to us, if they recognize that they can bid 20% above the engineer's estimate as a unit, that's what's going to happen. So, they'll just, it just gives more room. It means we end up, likely to end up paying more overtime, that's the impact that, publicizing that you can bid, you can bid higher. I'm not sure whether, I think that you should, I just think, just look at that closely before you make a decision about how much we're going to let it be. A way to determine that, we can look at our history, whether it's over last year, over years. How many projects did we have to reject because they were 10% over, they were over that 10% process? And then from there, you can determine of those, how much they were over, and then what do we end up paying for the project? And from that can give you an idea of how much of a big problem this actually is, and how much is at stake if we don't, if we don't, if we, if we allow, if we change it, raise it up to 20%. How much money do the taxpayers likely end up paying extra for projects? Now, the other thing, the other one that I had a concern, had thoughts about was dealing with civil service. What Mr. Hastings presented seems to be in opposition to what the chief presented. So I don't have a problem with adjusting it and doing things that get us to hire more police officers. So I have to wait until it's written, what you write, to see what exactly it says. Civil service ensures that we all get a fair chance at being a police officer or a fireman. That's what it does, levels the playing field. Now, what Mr. Hastings said indicated that we have the right, and maybe I didn't understand, you can correct me, please. I took from what he said that we already have the right of home rule to adjust civil service rules to suit what we think they should be. That doesn't sound like you have to change the charter in terms of what you said, that's what I took from it, that the charter doesn't have to be changed to fix the problem that he, that the chief thinks that he has. What the chief presented was, that he intend, his position is, that people should be able to come in and apply, and then they'll evaluate them and decide who they want to hire. That is something that I'm going to have a significant problem with. Okay? We went through this stuff through the '70s and '80s and had to sue you folks to get a fair opportunity for some of us to get on the police department. So that's, now you know the baseline of where I'm at. If you write a law and a change that is going to ensure that everyone has a fair opportunity and it's not going to be the judgment of whoever's sitting at the desk taking the applications, then I'll be on board. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Additional comments regarding city business? Now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.